I'll call to order the August 5th meeting of the Newton County Board of Commissioners. I'll ask Commissioner Mason if you'd have our invocation and Commissioner Edwards will lead us in the pledge, please.
Let us bow our heads. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us back to this place one more time to do the business of Newton County. We ask that as we move forward in doing the business of Newton County that you would be here with us, that you would lead us and guide us and direct us so that we may make the best decisions for this community. We ask that you give us the wisdom, the knowledge, and the understanding to be able to understand county business and how to make sure that we are doing the best things that we can to enhance the quality of lives for our community. I ask that you bless everyone that's in our community, touch them. We even ask right now that you give us the desires of our heart to be able to help meet their needs, God, in whatever way that we need. We thank you, we praise you, we give you all the kingdom honor and the glory. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Cooper, I believe, second.
The next item we have on the agenda, Madam Chair.
What, I'm sorry.
We have a motion, a second, we need to vote.
Yes, we need a vote now. All in favor? Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Sampson.
The next item we have on the agenda is item number five. It is for our citizen comments. At this time, the citizen comments is for agenda topics only. Again, this is for the items that are on the agenda only at this time. Each person has three minutes to come forward and address the board. And once your time has completed, we will ask the next person to come forward. We ask that you provide your first and last name and address for the record. Thank you.
Dennis Taylor, 385 Langro. Oh, man. What I want to do, I understand the rules and I follow the rules. I want to give solid applause to the great citizens of Newton County that took the time to come up here in record numbers and speak against this tax increase, millage rate increase. And that's what I'm talking on is the millage rate increase. And I thank the Commissioner for pointing out some things on the JDA and other stuff. But one thing really disturbed me, really disturbed me, should disturb everybody, the angst not dry on this millage rate or on this budget. And last meeting, you were already talking about pulling money you don't have that you said was needed for eight years for fire service investigation. And I don't know whether you needed it or not. I'm not talking against it. What I'm talking against is the millage and what that does to the millage. When you pull money you don't have, it's coming out of our pockets. You're gonna have to make it up somewhere. And most likely, it's gonna affect the next budget. You should never spend money you don't have in a budget unless it's a dire emergency. Eight years, that's not a dire emergency. It should have been in the last budget or one of them eight years worth of budgets. So I don't hold no lot of hope for the next budget if we're gonna do stuff like that. You got to quit spending what you don't have. And you got to start absorbing some of this increases for your employees like I used to have to do. You got to absorb it within your process, cutting costs, going for higher efficiencies, cut out duplications. You know, you've been there. You got to do stuff like that to have a good budget. It's not gonna come to you. You can't do it right before the next budget time. You got to start from right now. Look for that duplication. Look for that cost cut. And it's nothing about employees getting paid right. We want them to get paid right. Maybe you have too many. Maybe you need to put a freeze on hiring, something like that. Your morale be better because they still gonna get their raises. And you'll be surprised what initiative a dude employs when you take care of them.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next item we have on the agenda, I do not see any documentation for a chairman's report, but we will move into, oh, we will move into the report from the county manager, Mr. James Brown.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I do not have anything to report this evening.
Thank you.
The next item we have, Madam Chair, is before we, I'm sorry, before we go into the consent agenda, we have been asked to amend the consent agenda for our District Four Commissioner, Mr. J.C. Henderson, by adding the approval of an appointment for District Four for the Newton County Department of Family and Children's Services. Ms. Juanita Thompson will be replacing the late Mr. James Russell. His term was scheduled to expire June 30th of 2026. And this is going to be an adjustment to make it eight, letter E, under the consent agenda. I ask for a motion to amend tonight's agenda with the recommended request, please.
Okay, do we have a motion?
One.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you, it's unanimous.
Madam Chair, the next item we have is under new business. It's item number nine. And we will have Ms. Brittany White, our Finance Director.
Ms. Hamp, we now have to approve the consent agenda. That motion just amended the consent agenda.
My apologies, my apologies.
Could I also add one thing? Could we have a little slight discussion? Typically, there's a discussion. You know, you make a motion, second discussion, then you approve it.
Patrick.
My apologies. Madam Chair, after we've taken the motion, he wanted to add discussion if the Commissioners would like to have a discussion.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
If I may, thank you.
Commissioner Henderson.
Yes, ma'am. Well, first of all, to you, Madam Chair, I would like to apologize for raising my voice. I think that's the first time that I have raised my voice in 27 years. But I'm just sensitive when it comes down to my seniors, to the seniors of Newton County. My discussion is that I had the opportunity and pleasure to know the late Reverend James Russell. He was a good friend, he served for several years. And it saddened me and I thank the entire District Four, if not the entire county of him passing. And so we just like to thank God for his service to the county and welcome Ms. Anita Thompson.
Can I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion? Okay, that's unanimous.
Okay, we are ready now. We're going to move into new business, and it is going to be item number nine. And we're gonna have Ms. Brittany White, our Finance Director, come forward. She's going to address the 2025 millage rate adoption, county maintenance and operations at 856 and Fire District at 0.892.
Thank you. We are seeking adoption of the 2025 millage rate. We have done all of our advertisements, all of our required public hearings, so now we're ready to actually adopt the millage rate. So we are seeking approval to adopt the millage rate at 8.567 for county MNO and for the Fire District, 0.892.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. That's stated by the county's Fire District.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Madam Chair, the next items that we have on the agenda will be presented by our Newton County Fire Services Chief, Mr. Royce Turner. He's going to address number 10, 11, and 13. Number 10 is requesting board approval that does not require a cost-to-match of a memorandum of understanding between Newton County Fire Services and Newton County School System regarding fire safety education. The next item is going to be requesting board approval to establish a life vest loner program at Newton Factory Shoals that also does not require a match. And then the next item is Fire Services is requesting board approval for agreement with Pearson VUE and its agreement between Newton County Fire Services and Pearson VUE to be authorized testing center to provide National Registry EMT and advanced EMT certification. And again, that also has no cost-to-match. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Could I have a motion on item number 10?
One.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? I'm sorry.
One moment, Madam Chair. Chief is gonna present 10, 11, and 12.
Not needing to, if y'all are comfortable proceeding, you don't have to.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair and our Board of Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present. This number 10 agenda is a memorandum of understanding that we are trying to bring in a partnership with Newton County Board of School System to insert our educational department within their curriculum, fire safety. We're just trying to execute a memorandum of understanding.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, motion carries.
Number 11?
Yes.
Fire Service Requesting Approval to Establish a Life Vest Loner Program. I am a data person. One thing we recognize that Factory Shoals out there, we had the most drownings in that area. So we tried to look to see how can Fire Service support initiative to try to reduce some of the drownings out in that area. So we went out and procured a grant that will pay for some life vests to put out in two areas out there. And hopefully, we can expand this program to Lake Verna and one of the other water facilities in the near future.
Okay, do we have?
One.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Discussion.
Discussions, I'm sorry, discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So would the life vests be placed at a certain place out there at Factory Shoals? Everybody, anybody who may want one can pick it up?
Yes, sir. So what the intent is to have two stations that a citizen can borrow, a loan at the time, and use it while they out there on the river. And then is, and then return it. And we're trying to establish that program. We're trying to try to grow the program out to Lake Verna and in the Yellow River.
And that's a very, that's a great idea, excellent. Because over the past few years, some of the people who have drowned in there, have people that I know, friends and childrens. And I, you know, I just, in my mind, I wanted us to do more, not only there, but like you said, Lake Verna, anywhere we have watered in order to make it more secure and safe for our citizens. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, that motion passes. Thank you. Number 12?
Number 12, we request a board approval to enter agreement with Pearson View. This is a platform where we train our employees as an EMS provider. Currently, we do not have a testing site in the area. The closest testing site is in Forest Park. So we're trying to go into partnership with Pearson View to establish our own testing site. So our members won't have to travel so far to take their national registered testing, and they can do it right here. And also, other municipalities can send their employees here to test also.
Do I have a motion?
One.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Motion passes. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next item we have on the agenda at this time is going to be number 13, and it is going to be open citizen comments. If you would like to address the Board of Commissioners, you may comment this time. Each person, again, will be allotted three minutes. Once the time has ended, we will ask for the next person to come forward. Please provide your name and your full name and your address for the record, and please speak into the microphone so that everyone will be able to hear.
Good evening, Board. My name is Maya Allen Neely. I'm a Newton County resident. I'm also here representing the 13th Federation of Democratic Women, and we represent nine, or six counties, including Newton. I wanted to talk about the West Side Youth Facility, especially given the fact on the 15th, there was conversation and allegations about the funds and the project itself. Newton County or Covington News actually submitted an article, and I'm gonna try to get paraphrase it, but get through it. We're actually paid a consultant $10,000 to tell us that the money wasn't available, the project wasn't viable, and then voted two weeks ago to give them another $33,000 outside of the budget. What Newton County or Covington News reported was that the money is available, has been available, and was never retracted. It stated that some of the reasons that Shannon, the Vice President of the program, stated, there was no site identified, there was no building pending, there was no engineering, there was no budget, there was nothing, she said. It was just an idea of a youth facility. During the meeting, Shannon shared that she believed that the $4 million federal funding was no longer available for the county to claim. However, after speaking to Hank Johnson's office this past Monday, she received confirmation that the funding was still on the table. The next step in the process should be finding a location. Independent federal funding, Newton County has also allocated 4.1 million for the project's completion. Voters approved 495,000 for the facility during the 2017 spots. This being said, these monies, if all procured, would stand to have a total allocated over 8 million. And because we're increasing taxes, I guess now we have monies to pay for those employees.
Hello, Board. First, I want to thank the Covington News for doing their due diligence and their research. They didn't take my voice, they didn't take you all's voice. They did the work and actually called the individuals to get the concrete information. After that meeting you guys had about two weeks ago, I was, it was done founding. Because to hear that consultant sit here and tell false information, to hear that funding that was passed by Congress can easily be reallocated when it's a law, we all as elected officials, you all as elected officials, should know better than that. This came from the Chief of Staff of Hank Johnson, a letter directed to me because I wanted to combat the lies that were told. There has been no communication about redirecting this funding to any other project that our office has been made aware of. If the county is having discussion, they will quickly learn that is impermissible. The $4 million will be appropriate in fiscal year 2023 and may only be used on this project and this project alone. Federal grants carry strict parameters that must be followed in order to receive funding. In November 2024, at the request of Board Chairman Lanier Sims, we once again helped Newton County staff with the grant administration point of contact for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, who will be overseeing that project. However, we are not aware if that contact will still be the same in the 2025 because a new administration will be in place. You all have until August 31st, 2031, to move forward with this grant. So let's stop the lies and move forward with the people of Newton County what they voted for. Also, you paid almost $100,000 for a consultant to go into the community and ask the people what they want in their facility and where they want to be placed. You all decided not to move towards that. So this is not about Elena Sanders, it's about the community. It's not about Elena Sanders being a hero, it's about Elena Sanders being a public servant and doing her job. And when you do your job, you want to say, I'm being a hero. Thank you.
Let's have order, please.
Dennis Taylor, Langro, Covington. About a decade ago, I was in this historical building, and it was packed. All the people couldn't get in, meter cameras was here from Atlanta. I gave my seat up out there to a lady from Spring Hill on the front row, and I went and sat right up there in the chief seat. What a beautiful sight it was. Speaker after speaker after speaker, black, white, male, female, east, west, north, south, came together and stopped a massive private landfill from coming into Spring Hill. That's what it's gonna take to straighten things out in this county, citizen. That's what it gonna take to straighten taxes out. That's what it's gonna take to stop this bad development from coming in here. You either got to be for development or against all major developments, no in-between. You may think something is good, and it may be good at first sight, but you gotta look outside the box, see what's tagging along behind it. John Patrol and try to get in here because of the money they gonna make off river and trucking industry. So be prepared for that. Politicians gonna have to ride both sides, wherever it's possible, wherever the law goes. But as citizens grouped together by the hundreds like we did that night, we can make changes in this county, and we're going to do it. Thank you.
My name is Howard Grex, and I live, I live at 55 River Shoals Court, Covington, Georgia. I noticed you guys was talking about the millage rates and taxes and all that stuff in there.
Fire, Chief.
Was in here also. But I live off of River Shoals Court, and there's 38 houses down there. We don't even have a fire hydrant down in there, nowhere from the street, from Flat Sho Road all the way down in there. We got 38 houses down there and no fire hydrant anywhere. Somebody need to fix that. You jacking my millage rate up, my taxes? You need to fix that.
Terry Jackson, I live here in Newton County. And I sit here and I listen to this elderly gentleman here speaking tonight. And he's passionate about what he's saying, but I don't think you politicians are hearing this man. He's on a budget, he's on a fixed income. And the state of Georgia tried to help the residents here. So what I would like to know, what happened to House Bill 581? Where everybody pays the taxes, the property taxes, to ease the burden on the homeowners? Now you guys are quick to jack up the millage rate, quick. But you ain't found no solution to ease the burden on the homeowners. Where is that at? The people are frustrated, they're tired. The economy is gonna sink, believe that, with the terrorists coming in, people losing their jobs. So you gotta think, what's gonna happen when people can't afford these mortgage rates? What's gonna happen then? House Bill 581 would have solved that problem instead of putting that burden on the taxpayer, on the homeowners, on the seniors. Why don't you guys look at these people I hear that's hurting? Do something for them. Okay? That's all they saying. That's all they want. They not asking for much. Find ways to cut some of the deficit that y'all running up here. House Bill 581 would have did a lot for this community. I know it would have did a lot for the people that's retiring, people asking for help on a fixed income. Y'all can do better, man. That's it.
Is there anyone else?
The next item we have, Madam Chair, is number 14. It's the board comments, and we're gonna start with District One, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So a couple of things I wanted to address. Mr. Taylor was right, this place was packed when they, when, before I was on the board, when they were stopping enlarging the landfill out in the Spring Hill community. So, but as a result of that, a lawsuit was settled, and the county, Solid Waste Authority, if I'm not mistaken, wasn't in existence then, the county had to pay, the county was on the hook for the settlement, purchasing of that property. And from what the county gives the Solid Waste Authority every single year is $750,000 to service that debt, that's it. So that's, that's the money that the county shifts over to the Solid Waste Authority is to service debt incurred by the county, it's just paid through the Solid Waste Authority. We also discussed tonight, the hearings are the, the millage rate hearings have been the last couple of weeks, the last two weeks, right? So, but the budget hearings were a while back, a month and a half or so back. So that's when we hashed through the budget at that time. We don't, we don't establish- We don't, we don't establish a millage rate and build a budget around it. We build a budget and use a millage rate to service that budget. That's, that's how that works. The millage rate is a tool, after we dis, after we discover what the, the tax digest is going to be from the tax assessors, then we, we know what our budget is, and we can use that multiplier of the millage rate to come up with the amount of money we need to run the budget. So, that's where that comes in. And House Bill 581 has frozen your property value, with the exception of maybe 4%, I think, for all homestead, all homestead properties in, in Newton County. So, 581 is in effect right now. It will not impact, or it did not impact, your school taxes. Newton County School System opted out of 58, House Bill 581, we have nothing to do with that. But for the purposes of the county taxes, the county budget, House Bill 581 essentially froze your property value from last year. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to bring to you all's attention, some of you may or may not know, I sit as the Chair of the Revenue and Finance Committee for the Association of County Commissions of Georgia. On that particular committee, we address property tax concerns. One of the things in our revenue and finance platform that we are proposing to our state legislators is property tax reform. The property taxes, what we see is a very, very important component of the overall local revenue structure and should be reformed but not eliminated. So, with the Association of County Commissions of Georgia, along with the commissions all across the state of Georgia, what our goal is to do is we're gonna be proposing to our state legislators to ask that the new state sales tax, taxes that are generated from an expanded sales tax base, should be partially used to shift the burden away from property owners by implementing a refundable income tax credit for taxpayers that have a homestead property tax liability that exceeds a reasonable percentage of their income. These changes will ensure that no one is forced to sell their property based, or property because of the tax burden. So, it was brought to my attention that some of our residents want to see elected officials fight for them. I want you to know that that is exactly what I'm doing, not only here on this board, but all throughout the state of Georgia. And we are going to be pushing, and as the Chair of the Revenue and Finance Committee, this is one of the several things that I am going to be pushing, that I'm going to be asking our state legislators to help us. There is even some exemptions and some tax shifting that we're gonna be looking at as well, making sure that the state legislator grants a statewide ad valorem tax exemption for special interests. The state should finance those tax breaks, not the local government. And so, we are working very diligently, and I am personally working diligently as the Chair of the Revenue and Finance Committee, and we're gonna be meeting, we're gonna be putting policies in place. So, we're gonna be asking our state legislators, and I want you to know, and I'm gonna do my best to keep you all updated on these policies that are coming forth, on this platform that's coming forth. And so, I want each and every one of the Newton County residents to know that I am personally working on your behalf, not only just here on the board, but even throughout the state of Georgia. And so, we're gonna do everything we can to try to make sure that we get this property tax reform pushed through our state legislator so that we can provide a level of additional relief to our residents. Also, I wanted to state real quickly, we talked about the commissioners that met with, that basically changed or that set up this budget. I wanna just put it out there to let everybody know, I didn't personally meet with any of our county manager or finance director personally. Basically, I sat down with another commissioner, which was Commissioner Edwards. We sat amongst them, they provided us with a budget, proposed budget at that time, it wasn't a final budget. There were some commissioners that went back and went line by line. I didn't personally meet with anyone. So, if anyone says that I personally met with someone, that's inaccurate information. I didn't set the budget, I heard the budget publicly, just like everybody else. And so, I wanna make sure that that's put out there as well, that I don't have to do anything behind the scenes. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I get a lot of phone calls and things on the West Side Youth Facility, and, and anybody would tell you that I'm passionate about the West Side Youth Facility. Matter of fact, I was passionate about it back in 2006, when it first started, again, trying to get a youth facility. During the time, there was a choice, boys and girls, I'm not sure what the other program was. So, I, I am passionate about the West Side Facility. I think during the time, we had some land that even was donated to us for the facility. We applied for some grants as well. And the reason why the grant was denied, because we didn't have a land, didn't have a land. Same, same thing, similar. So, to say that, and, and to hear that myself being challenged about the passion of the use that I have, like I said, I went through a lot dealing with that back in 2006. You know, lost jobs. I mean, I, I, so to say that, that I'm not passionate about it, I am passionate about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. If I could have had just two other commissioners who may have felt the same way that I felt about taxes and our seniors, then we wouldn't be having that eight point something percent of millage increase. Thank you.
Mr. Long?
Well, I worked my tail off to try to get that budget done, and I wasn't asked by anybody, I busted it. I talked on the phone, I scratched numbers, I sent them back, everything, because that's what I do, and I'm not embarrassed about it. It wasn't what I wanted, I wanted to stay the same. I made that very clear to my colleagues, that I did not want any increase whatsoever. But you know what? Based on the things that we added, and the splash projects we added, and the senior sitter, and all those things, I didn't get my way. But you know what? I worked with this board to try to do everything we could. I called Commissioner Cooper many times, talked to him over the phone, because he was at work, and talked to him and got his thoughts and his things that he thought were too high. And I, I admit to every citizen in this, on TV watching this and everything, I worked my tail off. I, I took time away from my business and lost money to do it, because it was that important to me. And that's how I feel about budgets and numbers. I've been doing budgets for 30 years for big companies, big corporations. I'm not an accountant, I'm just somebody that loves spreadsheets. So, I, I, I will sit here and say all day long, I worked my tail off, and I enjoy every moment of it, because I felt like that we got closer to what we needed. We saved five meals, in my opinion. So, you guys that think we didn't save anything, I can tell you, it would have been a lot worse if we hadn't dove in, because we looked at that thing, and I was like, "Oh, my God." And I, I think the county manager was so sick of seeing me for a couple of weeks, in fact, I'm having withdrawals, because I haven't seen him so much. I talked to him over the phone, but, you know, they were receptive, a lot of things, they said, "No, we can't do that, we can't change that, you know, we already locked into that." This person, I talked to every department head that I could to find out if they really needed certain things, because I felt like it was important. Because of the big increases in value that people were seeing, that concerned me about any increases in the millage rate. However, at the end of the day, to go up the small amount that we had to go up, I feel really good about that. And you know, it's, it's, like I said, it's not what I wanted, but finally, at some point, you know, they were like, "Leanne, we cannot do anything else." And, and I felt like at that point, that I had just beat a horse to death, and that it, that we have to stay where we're at to be able to maintain services for the citizens of Newton County. I had six road calls today, I went and looked at them, some of them no, some of them yes, but those are important things that we have to do for the citizens of Newton County, and it's a hard job. You know, I sit up here and hear people talking about us and yelling about us and all that, and I sit here and thinking, "Why am I doing this? Why am I doing this job?" It, it, it hurts my business, it hurts me going to the beach, it hurts me doing other things. But you know what? I love this county, and I'm here. I ran for election because of what I felt like was not being represented, of people wasting money, people not doing the right thing, people fighting, not getting things done. I ran for this seat because of that reason. And I will stay in here for the next three and a half years doing it. After that, you won't see me, I'll be gone. But then, I'm gonna give every ounce of my energy to this position, and nobody's stealing from anybody, nobody's taking from anybody, everybody has the same passion. So, I, I appreciate you coming, I love that you come and you tell us everything, I think it's great. I'm not stifling anybody from telling us, but just make sure you get the real facts. Don't go along with people that are trying to get likes and all kinds of stuff. Call us, I'll give you the facts. I'll sit down with you, come to my office, I'll sit down with you, anytime. But I appreciate you coming, I appreciate you speaking out, I appreciate the passion for the park that they have, I, I'm ready to, let's do it, if we got the money, let's do it. It's not that hard. Tired of hearing about it, I'm ready, action. So, that's how I feel about it, and I appreciate everybody that speaks out, because you do add something to this conversation every time you do. Thank you.
We need a motion now to adjourn the meeting.
Come on.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, thank you for coming.